It is 6:33 PM and on Wednesday, August 19th, 2020. And I am calling this meeting of the National Board of Education to order. We are meeting this evening via Zoom. As President of the National Board of Education, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the Governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic and in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order 12 pursuant to Executive Order 202004, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, I am confirming that we are providing public access to the meeting by telephone. To access Zoom, please refer to the agenda or the district's website for the meeting link. To join by phone, dial 1-877-853-5257. Meeting ID 83641445124. Passcode 056378. We previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting through public postings. Instructions have also been provided on the Nashua School District's website at www.nashua.edu and publicly noticed at City Hall and the Hopp Memorial Library. Let's see, if in the event that the public is unable to access the meeting, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Let's start the meeting by taking roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, please also state whether there's anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required by the right to know law. So, Mr. Guarino, could you please call the roll?
Okay. Greg Guarino is here. There is no one in the room. I'm by myself in this room. Paula Johnson?
Mrs. Johnson is present and I'm by myself.
Sandra Seem?
I'm present and I'm also alone.
Jen Bishop?
I'm here. I'm not alone. The kids keep coming in and out. But we're fine. Thanks.
Sharon Giulio?
I'm here and I'm currently alone.
Jessica Brown?
Present and I am alone in the room.
Heather Raymond?
I'm here. I'm currently alone in the room. It's entirely possible that a child will wander in at some point during the meeting. I apologize to everyone for that.
Dottie Oden?
I'm here and at this point, I'm alone in the room.
Gloria Kimmons? Gloria is not here tonight. We have a quorum also with us. We have Dr. Mosley. Dr. McKinney?
Here.
Mr. Parker? We have Ms. Ogara?
Here.
Ms. Marcia Bagley?
I'm here.
Mr. Rodriguez? Ms. Kinsella?
Present.
And we also have our student representatives. Mr. Gao?
Present and alone at the moment.
Mr. Norris?
Here and alone at the moment.
Okay, thank you. I think I have everyone. Unless I missed someone, I don't think I did.
Lisa Jengris is here.
Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Jengris is also here. Okay.
Okay, welcome, everybody. Thank you for joining us this evening. I have a lot packed into tonight's agenda because there's a lot going on as we prepare to startup school in the fall. So let's get right to it. I have two presentations this evening. So thank you very much to Mr. Rodriguez, our Director of Technology, and Ms. Jengris, our Athletic Director, for coming out tonight and letting us know what's going on with both of your programs. Mr. Rodriguez, can you start us off, please? Oh, and just a reminder to everyone that if you're sharing a screen, please make sure that your slideshow is in full screen mode so that we can all see it and it can be broadcast on the television. And to our board members, if you have a question, please save it till the end of the presentation. You can let me know by chat that you want to ask a question and I will call on people in the order in which I see them. Okay?
Can everybody see my screen?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Rodriguez.
Well, thank you for having me. This is a good issue to talk about right now, especially with the needs of the district. This is going to be a very brief presentation. Originally spoke with the Finance and Ops Committee last Tuesday and they wanted me to talk more to the full board to discuss the, you know, you know, proposed bandwidth increase for the district. So what is bandwidth? Bandwidth is how much information can pass through at one time? So it's kind of like plumbing. The larger the hole in the pipe, the more the water can go through. So the same thing with information. So the larger pipe that we have for the district, the more information can pass through. So right now, our current internet pipe is 2 gigabits per second and that does, it does quite a good job of keeping all our systems going. We don't really have to throttle our speeds too much with certain applications. And like I said, it does a job. However, we do run into some issues if we're going to be looking into possibly streaming throughout the district, especially during remote and hybrid times. So we'll get to that. So what we use our internet for and our bandwidth for is different internet. So I went to Google, searching webpages, videos. So that could be YouTube phones. So our phone is also run, most of our phone systems are run on the internet. And we also do some streaming with movies. So like I said, our current connection is 2 gigabits per second. And Ms. Oden brought this up during the Finance and Ops for streaming for the district. And if we have stream, if we have to stream in our classrooms, we would need to increase our bandwidth. So we would need to increase our pipe. What we're thinking about doing is increasing it an extra 6 gigabits. So we'd have a total of 8 gigabits per second. So it had to be a completely separate connection to what we have right now. So this is, this is the equipment cost. This is just a quick breakdown of what we would need to achieve this to support. So we would need some type of modules for our core switch. We would also need, which was purchased last year. So it would just be an extra piece added onto that. Then we also need some connectors to put our fiber in there to add on to those, to that expensive module, as you can see. What I think needs to be discussed further, and I think this is an important part, is we would also need to have equipment for teachers in the classroom. So if a teacher is, you know, teaching her class and she's at the whiteboard or he's at the whiteboard and he's writing things on the board, it's going to almost be not legible depending how far the laptop is. So if this is a good distance from where I am right now, my laptop is, it can be picked up on a microphone. But if I stand 10 to 15 feet back, the microphone's not going to pick it up as well. And the camera might be grainy. So that's an issue. So if we were to do this, it would be, we'd have to look into getting high gain microphones and those come out of $30 to $40 range. We would also need a highly reliable and high resolution camera to pick up what is actually written on the board and what a teacher is trying to show their class. Decent lighting is always important with a camera. We would also, what we use now is our video streaming services like Zoom, Google or Teams. Teams is relatively new for us. It came, we now have it through our Office 365 office suite. So it's a cloud system. One thing that we are seeing is that there's, with all of these things, including the Chromebooks, there is an equipment shortage across the country. We aren't the only ones who are looking to do this. So that's an issue. It's, as we get closer to the start of school, there's going to be shortage for all of these things. So that's something that we have to think about as well. So moving on to Comcast. Comcast is our current ISP. So this is where we get our internet from. So if we were to move to 4 gig and then the middle tier would be 6 gig and then 8 gig. This would be the yearly cost. So around $6,282 for a cost of $75,000 just for one year for this. The, this may be eratable with so many schools looking to do this across the country. E-rate may open up their window for filing this fall. Not sure. That's, that's just what I spoke with, with a consultant today. Or we could look to get a reimbursement of some sorts in January or February when they look to reopen their window again. But, but that would, it would be a little difficult because we already get reimbursed for our current internet pipe right now. So we are not sure if we can double dip with our E-rate funding for our internet pipe. So those are things that, you know, we have to consider. Also, when speaking to Comcast, they said that they need a 30-day lead time if we were to move forward with this project. So it's, if we're going to, if we're going to act, is this something we should act on? So it would be a little over a month from now before we can get this stood up. And that's all I have. That's just a quick summary of what it would take to just increase the pipe.
Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. I also was on a conference call last week with the architects and the construction managers for the middle school project. And they are actually having to move some of the internet cables at Penachuk as part of their project. And so they were planning on doing that in the next couple of weeks. So if the board wanted to add bandwidth for Penachuk, we would need to do that in conjunction with the middle school project so that they don't move it only to have us rip up all of the work that they just did to do a new.
If they were to do that, we would have them bring it in the same location where our current fiber is coming in right now. So coincidentally, we have a meeting with them tomorrow with the, with the construction, with Harvey Construction. So we can all be on the same page with how our technology wants to look like moving forward. So we are going to be with Harvey to discuss this tomorrow.
Okay, great. That's exciting. All right. Ms. Giulio had a question?
Hi. This may seem really naive, but having been in the classrooms and worked in the libraries, the only cameras I'm familiar with that we have in the school right now are document cameras. I assume that they're not capable of doing what we would need for live teaching. Are the cameras needed something like the cameras that are built into our cell phones? Or are they more elaborate than that?
They're a little bit more elaborate than that. They, you can do a zoom in, zoom out type of focus thing. And if you, if you even use a Chromebook, for example, since we have, we have a lot of Chromebooks right now. If they were to use Chromebooks in a classroom, and let's just say that wall is the whiteboard, which is about 10 feet from me, it would be hard to see me. I would be grainy and I wouldn't have a very distinct voice. I mean, I'm mic'd up right now, but it's just the nature of it. It's what we, it's what we would be facing. It'd be a problem because students, I think it would cause a lot of frustration for students if we didn't, if there wasn't enough equipment for this. And also teachers too, because stopping the class. Like Dr. McKinney said before, there's a lot of fatigue, technology fatigue. And we want them, we wouldn't want to make them more frustrated than what they actually are.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Giulio. Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. How many classrooms are we talking about doing this for?
Well, I'm guessing the hope from teachers, maybe that entire district. I'm not, I'm not sure how many classrooms that would be. But if this is a service we're offering to increase bandwidth, I'm thinking it would be an option for everybody to do.
Well, the reason I'm asking, I'm kind of curious as far as, you know, on the remote end, you know, are we going to, you know, high school, middle school, elementary school? Because just to kind of get an idea, because I think parents out there would like to know too, you know, with the bandwidth. Because I'm listening to all this and I listened to this in committee. And now, you know, even with the middle school project, which I'm wondering, you know, after all this, how many students we're going to actually have coming back into the classrooms, even into the middle school down the road that we're building? So I kind of would, you know, are we going to basically be mostly high schools? And also I'm just kind of want to get an idea to this. How many classrooms that we're talking about here for $75,000 per year? But I mean, because these are now added costs on top of our regular costs that we had when we passed the budget. And now we keep racking up more and more costs to retrofit everything between hybrid and remote learning. So I mean, we should have some type of an idea here. I mean, that's, it's a good question.
Yeah, I think it is too. I just think we're just making more options available for teachers to deliver some type of instruction. I'm not sure of the number of classrooms that we're, will be streaming.
Well, I'd like, I'd like to know that, you know, because with the remote and the hybrid, it's yes for the instruction time, but you know, $75,000, another added cost coming in. And I'm sure there's going to be more added costs. So we should have answers to this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Mr. Gao?
Just one quick thing regarding like the $75,000 cost. From my understanding, like if you increase the amount of gigabytes that the network can, can hold, like it, it's something that I personally, as a student, think is needed either way. Because I know like in classes, a lot of times we use our cellular devices to do things like Quizlet Live or Kahoot. And a lot of times we rely on the school networks in order to do that. And right now, the school network really is, is pretty slow and it's really difficult to run these things on. So I think maybe either way, like even if we weren't in COVID, like a network upgrade would be pretty nice.
Well, coincidentally enough, we just finished a network upgrade for this, for the high schools. So Dr. Mosley will be very happy with that. So we, right now, just to give you an update on that, our high schools are all outfitted with high density access points, which means we can allow almost 100 devices per classroom. So for the entire, for both high schools, we should, it should be around 23,000 to 25,000 devices can be in both of those buildings. So I hopefully you shouldn't be experiencing issues if you go back. If you do, let us know. But we, just the next phase is just tuning those access points to make sure they're overpowered or underpowered. So we, we are almost there. I would say 99.5% of the way complete.
That's awesome. I'm so glad to hear that. I thought there's students are as well.
Yep. And our next, our next phase with the middle school project, we're going to work on mirroring the middle schools to the high schools. So that's, that's phase two of our, of our wireless project and infrastructure upgrade.
That's very exciting. Thank you for letting us know, Mr. Rodriguez. Dr. Mosley, I think I saw your hand. Mr. Norris, I did see that you wanted to speak as well.
Can you guys hear me?
I was just going to echo what Greg said earlier. Basically, with the upgrades will follow the construction. You don't want to, some of our buildings, as they start to go through the renovation projects, that, that will come, will accompany the upgrades or technology upgrades. And that's exactly what Greg just mentioned. So we'll look to our middle schools for all three buildings. And then once that project's completed, then we'll start to work on the elementary schools. What we don't want to do is put a new technology in a building that's going to be renovated. That's just a waste of money.
All right, Mr. Norris?
Thank you. So I agree with what Josh was saying. I totally think that a network upgrade would help everything in classes. But would it be possible to upgrade? And then after, hopefully, when we go back to normal, we don't need as much bandwidth because we don't streaming classes? Would it be possible to go back and then we don't have to, we only would have to pay the $80,000 for whatever, one or two years and then go back to our current rate? Or is that like you're installing the things and then it'd be extra cost to take them out? Or?
So we can, we can, that's why we're looking at a one-year service thing. So it would be a separate fiber connection coming in. It's, and I'm, I'm trying not to complicate it, but it's actually a complicated process. So it's called BGP. I'm not even fully well versed in how it works, but it's what Comcast and other engineers that we would work with to make this happen. So we would, it would be a kind of like a temporary connection for one year or as long as COVID lasts. And then we would do everything, just go back to our, our normal bandwidth. Or even just entertain, maybe just increasing what we have after when our new E-rate window opens. Just so we, because this is a good time for us to really reevaluate how we're, how we do our computing and our bandwidth and what our needs are.
Thank you.
Yep.
Seem?
Budget, will it not? Am I missing something so that, so that we could look at how this will affect the overall budget? If we can even do it, comes to my mind. Because, because I know we're not really an affluent, unfortunately. We don't have the money to do everything we'd like to do. So am I off base?
No, I think the funds we were going to pull from for this would be part of the CARES Act money and not from our.
We would, would not to, but, but if that comes from the CARES Act, that's one thing. But the $75,000 a year would not, I don't think that would come from the CARES Act.
No, no.
We have to look forward to, are we putting in equipment that we can't even afford to keep up? Because if we have it and we can't use it because we can't pay the fees. So I think it would have to go before budget.
Yeah, it would, it would just be a, you have it, it's kind of like turning off the lights. If you don't pay your bill, they turn off the lights. So that's.
I know that.
So that's how we're going to look at it. So they're going to shut up, we're going to tell them to shut off the lights after a certain day.
And I certainly am not saying that I wouldn't want it. I mean, everybody wants, everybody wants the latest and best for our kids. But, you know, but it goes without saying, if you can't pay for it, you can't have it. So thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Sandra. This did come to finance to here. So it did go through finance last week. Ms. Oden?
Yes, thank you. I just think for this year, I think it's something we ought to invest in. When one of our students, I believe it was Mr. Norris, said for the first quarter there, they're going to have one class a week with a teacher in, in each subject. That bothered me. I think we owe it to our kids. We got money to address some of the issues from the CARES Act. And I, I think it's a wise investment for our students. We can see how it goes for a year. I would think some of the cameras and microphones could be used. I haven't talked to too many people who haven't said they felt that even if we got to a hybrid model, that we probably would go back into a remote model of learning with flu season. They, they feel that's a great chance. And I know it sounds like a lot, but in a budget of 160, 56 million or 160 million, I think 80,000 is a worthwhile investment for this, for our students to learn. I think it can be used in many ways, at many levels. And I did ask if we couldn't afford to do every room at every school, could we have certain rooms designated as rooms where people could stream? You know, if there's a particular thing that a teacher felt strongly about that streaming was necessary, they would have some rooms available in a school to do that. So I would like to, I support this because I think our kids are worth it. I, I know the yearly cost is substantial in, in looking at it with all the expenses, but I think, I think it's a wise investment at this point for what we're doing in education. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Oden. I have a question for Dr. Mosley or Dr. McKinney or Mr. Parker, I think. And I guess the question is, do we have any sense of how many teachers would utilize this if it were made available to them? So as we're starting remote and as we go back and forth with remote and hybrid, do we know how many teachers want to be able to access their classrooms and provide instruction from their classrooms as opposed to, or have the option to do so as opposed to out of, you know, their living room or their dining room or wherever?
We, I'll, we don't have a definitive number. There are some teachers who have expressed a desire to, to actually come into the building and do that, that type of work within their classrooms and certainly teach in their buildings. So, you know, I'd say it's probably mixed. We don't have a definitive number. Certainly for something like this, again, it would probably be more, you think about one room or one of, one room that would be designated at the top of my head, you'd probably, we'd probably have to go with our, one of our, I would say, most recently constructed buildings. So it'd be the high school, maybe Broad Street, Sunset Heights, those types of envi, those types of classrooms in those buildings. That's my, my initial thought. I don't, I don't have that number. So I don't want to say a number and then you install all this equipment at the cost of $89,000 and then we're not using it. So we'd have to do some more research and get back to you in terms of the teachers who would actually take advantage of that.
Just to be clear, the cost from finance was about, oh shoot. I think the total cost with all of the equipment to equip the high schools and middle schools and have the bandwidth increase was like $200,000.
I think it was $225,000.
Yep, I think you're correct. And then.
Cameras and the webcams.
Right. And so the 87,000 is, or 88,000 is just the Comcast annual cost. But then there's also all the equipment that needed to be bought and installed.
So I'm sorry, maybe I misunderstood. So the request is to spend the 200,000 plus? Is that correct?
Well, I think that's, that's what was presented to us at finance if we were to equip the high schools and the middle schools. So that's where we're at. I see you, Ms. Seem. Ms. Bishop has a question and she hasn't spoken yet. So I'll go to her. And also then Ms. Seem and then Ms. Johnson.
Thanks. Quick question for the teachers and staff that are going to need to be working from home due to whatever their restrictions are. Are they going to be provided with the same level of internet access and streaming capabilities as they would from within the school?
I would say that would vary too. We also just have to be careful about the cameras too, because some of our kids do not, let's say we have in-person, in-person instruction. Some of the kids have no recording restrictions on them as well. You can't record the kids. So we just have to be careful with that. Ms. Bishop, to your point, it varies. Some of our teachers have very equipment at home. There's no, there is a, this popped up, I believe, during our question and answers. So there is a sense of equity out there that has been broached by the teachers because not all of the teachers have the same level of internet connectivity. Some of our teachers, for example, don't live in Nashua. So they can't take, they can't take advantage of the hotspots that are free. So they're using their own bandwidth to connect and facilitate lessons if they choose to remote learning.
So if we were to do this, then those teachers could potentially have the option of coming in and having a classroom with connectivity where they wouldn't have to worry about what they had at home. Dr. McKinney, I think, wanted to speak on this as well. Oh, go ahead, Dr. Mosley.
As long as they're in the building, that these cameras and this equipment is going to be stationed. Some of these, to do the whole district, it would probably be a little bit more than the $250,000.
Yeah, because we didn't talk about the 12 elementary schools. Yeah, because we, we didn't talk about the 12 elementary schools. So I would imagine it would be, you know, triple the cost.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Uh, Dr. McKinney?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to share that, um, Mr. Rodriguez, myself, uh, was in a meeting today with our two tech coaches, our three tech integrators, um, Mr. Parker and starting to, uh, form a distance learning committee to look at, um, some of these issues. Um, cause I'm hearing from them that teachers do need, um, better technology to work from home, not just a Chromebook, but a, you know, like a tablet or a PC. Uh, I'm seeing more teachers putting things out on Donuts Choose for, um, equipment to work from home and do, um, video of themselves. So I think coming to a consensus around what are, what's the needs assessment requested district, worry with the spend in the, uh, COVID funds? And then how can we support everybody, uh, going forward would be something to consider. Cause I would hate to, um, use, utilize all these funds and upgrade the technology. And if we end up in a full kind of quarantine again, this, you know, great network is sitting there until we get back to it again. So I think we have to be a little flexible and allowing people to have what they need so they can work in a variety of different places. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McKinney. Um, I have Ms. Esteem and then Ms. Johnson.
I just wanted to know if the, if finance is recommending to do this now, or are we going to wait until we have a look at, at more of this detail? Can you hear me?
I can hear you. I think that's a Ms. Odin question, um, because, uh, Mr. Donovan is not here. So I don't believe they voted on it at finance. I think finance wanted to present it to the whole board as opposed to making a recommendation at that time.
You're correct. We did not vote on this.
Did we have, I think we had questions at finance about exactly what I had just asked about. You know, uh, what's the need? Uh, what does the district want us to do?
Thank you.
Uh, Dr. Mosley, were you going to speak?
Oh, I'm just gonna listen. I'm listening for a sec. That's all.
Okay, okay. Ms., uh, wait, Ms. Johnson, then Ms. Brown.
Thank you. Okay. I guess I'm going to go back to kind of my original question here because we don't know how many teachers are going to work remotely from their home. And I guess my question is, if school is not open and nobody's in the schools, why aren't teachers going into their classroom? They can wear the mask going into the schools. I, I guess I'm don't understand this. I'm back to work. I'm around people. I'm wearing a mask all the time now to go to work. And if there's no, they're not having any interaction with people, they're basically going into a classroom that they could be working out of the school versus out of their home, which we don't know where they're living. So their bandwidth might not be there. So I don't get why the teachers aren't going back into the classrooms, even if there's nobody there. How many teachers live out of Nashua that don't have the correct bandwidth? We don't know how many classrooms this is going to really affect. How many? I mean, there's so many unanswered questions here. I think before we can vote on something to approve it, we need to know what we're approving for how many classrooms. And again, I'd like to know why aren't the teachers going to be in their classrooms? Like I said, I'm back to work. I take chances every day. I'm out in the public all the time working. I'm wearing my mask. And there's nobody in the classroom. This, in my opinion here, and people might not like my opinion, but why aren't they going back into the classroom where they have everything that they need? And that's their classroom versus working maybe from a dining room or bedroom or, or room. And I mean, we're paying them to be in the classroom and I think their classroom should be in school. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Uh, Ms. Brown?
Thank you. So I'm in support of increasing the bandwidth. I think it gives us more opportunities. And more options for teachers. It's going to be better, uh, if we even are back in school part-time or in the springtime, if there's a chance for us to get back into school. Even with the high density access points, that's obviously going to improve the, um, number of devices that can get online all at once. Uh, Mr. Rodriguez, what would you, are you recommending the four gig, the six gig or the eight gig, um, upgrade?
Uh, either six or eight.
Six or eight?
That would be my recommendation. Um, with eight, it would give us a 10 total. Um, with the two that we have right now, we could run all operations on that and then, um, have other internet like streaming and videos or whatever be supported, kind of like on the rest of the network. We'd have to figure that out with some engineers though. So just because this, I guess that it's, it's not a simple thing. It's a, it's actually quite complicated. So we would have to get some, uh, expert advice on how to implement this.
Okay. Um, then I would like to move that we install a, um, the correct material. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm trying to write the motion as we go with the eight gig. That we approved the eight gigabytes upgrade to our connectivity, um, in an amount not to exceed 87,984 dollars for the 21, 22 school year.
I'll second.
So the motion was to approve the eight gig, um, for the 87, 909, whatever it was. What's the number?
87,984.
Oops, that doesn't include any of the, um, equipment that Mr. Rodriguez led would be needed to utilize that eight G, correct?
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay, Ms. Esteem?
It's not, I don't think the motion is worded correctly. If she wants it, you have to install the equipment before you can start paying the monthly cost. Or the annual cost, which is probably annual, not monthly. And I, I, you know, I have to say, I think we're premature. I mean, if, if they're not even, if Dr. Mosley and, and is not even aware of how many people would use it and where we're, I'm not saying I'm against it. I am. I mean, I, I think it's good for the kids and it's good for the school. So that we would get it, but I think it should be planned cautiously and carefully. And it shouldn't be executed on it. It shouldn't be a spin and make a decision. I agree with Mrs. Johnson. Uh, don't always do that. You all know that, but, but in this case, I have to say, I agree with her completely. I think we're premature making a motion. So I would vote against it. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Esteem. Uh, I see Dr. Mosley and I see Ms. Gilio.
Underste-
And Mr. Guarino.
This was, I, I just want to say anytime we get new equipment, there is a level of professional development. We have to provide the teachers. We, because it's nice to have the equipment. So it's, it's the, the 87 and some change plus the $250,000, but we, um, we should include, and I don't have a number in front of me right now, but we are going to have to provide some type of excuse me, some type of professional development for, for our students and I'm, I'm sorry. We do have to provide some type of professional development. That's all I'm saying. So if we have, I don't know who's to. We do have to provide some type of professional development and that will add to the cost that's currently being, uh, proposed, the motion that's currently being proposed. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Mosley. Um, that is an important note about professional development. So I appreciate that. Um, did you have a follow-up, Ms. Esteem?
We should do this tonight.
I, I'm sorry. You were on mute for part of it. You.
I'm sorry. Is Dr. Mosley saying that he want, that he thinks we should do this tonight?
Dr. Mosley, all I'm saying is, once the board takes this vote, um, understand that there's an additional cost to this because we have to provide the professional development. And right now I do not have that cost, uh, that, that cost available for the board. So for example, it's $250,000 for, and some change for the equipment. Plus the expanded the bandwidth. So I'm just doing, I'm, I'm not a Dan Donovan. That's about what? 300 and 323, 330? So $333,000. But I'm also saying there's an additional cost that will incur because we do have to provide the teachers in faculty with some training on how to use this new equipment.
So, are, is he, are you in favor, Dr. Mosley? Or do you want us to wait and give you more time to work out the details?
Here's what I'm thinking and going with Garrett Christina and just the governance piece. One of the things that I, I thought might've happened is that this was already vetted at the finance and this was already voted on at the finance. So when it comes to the board, we already have that background information. You have the costs for the, uh, for the professional development. You have the costs for the equipment. And you have, more importantly, a timeline in terms of when all of these benchmarks are going to be hit. We also don't have Dan here and we do have unpredicted costs that might come up as a result of this COVID-19 as we start the school year. Two, two, 300, $250,000 is, is a lot of money to, 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 to move forward. We'll start to think about, um, starting the school year. Um, I, is this important? Absolutely. I think it's important for all of our kids. Uh, uh, in terms of a priority, um, right now, uh, we're PPE equipment. Um, how much is that going to cost to get, to get that in all, all of our, our buildings? Uh, and we're still getting those numbers out right now. So, um, I, I, I would, I, I go, if, whatever the board decides, I would caution the board as we start to consider this, that if Garth or myself or, or Mr. Parker comes and says, listen, we need an additional $30,000 or $40,000 to do professional development, you kind of have to be aware of that too. And I would like to get this all pretty and both, and nicely packaged. So everyone knows the expectation and how much it's going to cost with everything.
Okay. So, um, just from my notes from finance, um, I believe there was some um, startup cost as well, but I had written down that the total cost to institute this, not counting PD, but for all the equipment and the bandwidth and the installation issues was about $225,000 for this year. Um, so, but again, I think the point about PD is important. Um, I would also say that, um, you know, this went to finance and the finance committee asked these questions and asked for this information. Um, so we could help the board make our decision. Um, everyone wants to speak. So my list in order of hands that I saw or in the chat is Ms. Gilio, Mr. Guarino, Ms. Odin, uh, Ms. Brown and Ms. Bishop.
I'm just.
Oh, and Ms. Johnson. And then at that point, I think, um, we ought to decide what we're going to do and, um, everyone's had an opportunity.
Hi, is it my turn? Okay. I just have, I'm a little confused, so I want to clarify something. Um, I, I believe that Ms. Brown's motion is for expanding the bandwidth only. Is that correct, Ms. Brown? Okay. Um, I believe that when we were talking about this a few minutes ago, um, dur- during, um, Mr. Rodriguez's presentation that a couple, one of, at least one of the students talked about how slow things happen even now when people are in school with the current bandwidth. Um, and that there were a lot of, and I think Ms. Gingris, because I was doing, looking at her face. And, and I think, um, they were talking about different things that they do in school, like with their, with their, with their cell phones or they ring in on some kind of, you know, that, that we need an increase in bandwidth anyway. And so I, I'm just a little confused because I thought her motion was just for that. And that perhaps we'd have a discussion later on the cameras and necessary equipment to do the additional.
Can I just speak up to clarify that, that part?
To Rodriguez.
Yes. Um, so what we had before with our access points is what, their hotspots is what we connect with. Before we're, they were only really allowing, the, the technology was capable of only allowing 25 to 30 devices comfortably. Well, if i- i- in a classroom now, since we've updated our access points or hotspots, they can allow comfortably up to 100. So, uh, multiple connections can come at one time. So it may seem like bandwidth was slow, but it was actually the, the access points in the room weren't allowing any more connection. So if you think about it, if there are 25 students in a room, each of them has a cell phone connecting to the wifi and then they want to bring on a Chromebook or a laptop computer. That's, that goes over to the com- the comfort zone of that access point. And only one connection and bit of information can go through at a time where these access points now that are throughout the high schools and that we'd like to bring out throughout the rest of the district in the coming years allows that, those connections. So that's not really, it, they, they may, they are related, but they're not the same. So one, especially with the, the access points we have now, they do, it does lean towards a better environment for students going forward.
So just to clarify, because, um, we're not the most technical group here. The bandwidth issue is specifically to allow video streaming by the teachers because that takes up, that's a lot more data that's going in and out.
Resource intensive, yes.
Okay. As opposed to, you know, using Google or looking up, you know, things which is, which are just text.
Smaller, right. Yep. Video, video is, is resource intensive per connection. It's, I, I believe it's over three megabits per second, which is, if you add up the amount of teachers who would be doing it at one time, it's quite a bit. You know, we have a lot of teachers with, that would, we, and that's on top of our regular operating bandwidth so that we use our phones, we use our regular internet, we use our inter-intranet in between our buildings. So we don't want to clog those things up. Um, that's why we're looking to, to increase it. So, um, I mean, I can do just a little bit more research in our, uh, myself to get i- i- just, just for implement, implementing this because, um, I'd like to clear up more confusion, maybe given the opportunity next week, I can speak to you a little bit more about this instead of making a vote tonight. Uh, that's, but that's up to the group right here.
Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. Ms. Gilio?
Um, and just to clarify, so at the beginning, um, you were speaking of some recent upgrades that just happened to the two high schools. Is, that's, that's not included in this $87,000 expanding the bandwidth.
Nope, that, nope, that was.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, that was previously done in the summer.
At the high schools. They, Mr. Norris and Mr. Ga would notice an improvement in when they were using their devices in the classroom already.
Yes.
Thank you. I just was.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, we over, we overhauled all of our high school infrastructure. It is completely new and fancy schmancy. So.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you so much, Ms. Gilio and Mr. Rodriguez. Um, next I have Mr. Guarino. Um, and thank you for everybody who's being so patient as I go down the list.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I guess, um, we should, what, what I would, uh, suggest and recommend is that, um, we, we make the motion so that it allows the district to implement the expansion of the bandwidth to eight gigs, but not put a money, uh, a money amount on it. That way there they can implement it based on their, uh, priorities. Um, they have, they have the, the, uh, the go-ahead. Doesn't mean that, you know, it's going to be a, a top priority. If there are other priorities and when they do get the money for PD and the, and the money for, to implement it, then they can do it. That way there it's flexible. Uh, because we do need the expansion of, of the bandwidth and it, it is, it is a, an impediment. And, and we're actually already doing it on, in the, in the middle schools, I guess, which is separate in, from this. But, uh, I mean, I would, I would move to amend the motion, uh, to remove the, uh, the, the, the limit, which is not to exceed 87,984. And, and just say that, uh, we, uh, move to approve the district to implement, uh, the expansion of the bandwidth to eight gig. I think that way there, doesn't have a time limit. That way there the, the administration can, it, it's more flexible and they can, they have the go-ahead to, to expand the bandwidth and, um, based on, based on their priorities because it is, it is at a certain point going to become a priority. It's al- it's already an impediment to, to, uh, it's already an impediment to, to remote learning. So, um, so that's what, that's my suggestion is, and I.
I'll second the amendment.
Okay. Thank you.
So I'm just going to make a suggestion. Since you guys both are the people who made the original motion and the amendment, um, can we just agree that the motion is now to, um, uh, approve the district to expand the bandwidth to eight G?
Yep.
I will accept that.
Okay. It's just housekeeping. Okay. So, um, Okay, so um, okay, thank you, Mr. Guarino. Um, the next person on my list is Ms. Odin.
Yes, thank you. I had a question for Mr. Rodriguez. How much did it cost you to increase the access points at the high school to get uh, a hundred uh, devices on rather than just twenty five? What was that cost?
Uh, it was E-rated, boy, we just back, we did this back in April. I believe the cost before E rate was just shy of half a million, but I think after that it was like two hundred and thirty thousand, I want to say, E-rated. Um, don't quote, I don't quote me, but that's, that's the last time I looked at the numbers. I mean, I could probably pull up right now.
That, that, that's okay, it's a substantial savings with E-rate.
E-rate, yeah.
And you said you're not sure whether we would get E-rate on bandwidth?
Yeah, it, that's, that's what's could be a little bit, a little bit of complications with that. So that's why I'm working closely with the E-rate consultant about this. So uh, I, I, that's why we had to be kind of careful on, if we increase our current pipe, I think that would uh interfere with our current E-rate uh refund. So this is a, it considered a category one E-rate. Um, category two is everything that's what we did with the access points and the switching and stuff like that. This is a category one because it comes from internet connections.
Okay, thank you. And and I would just like to say, uh, when we're talking about the camera, the cameras wouldn't be on the children, on the students. It would be on the teacher who's presenting. Uh, certainly if there was a camera in the room, it would be toward the front, in front of the students. So I don't think that would be an issue at all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Odin, um, Ms. Brown.
Um, thank you, actually, I think what I had had my hands raised for was to clarify, the clarification that Ms. Julia was mentioning, that the two hundred and twenty five total was to purchase cameras for the classrooms also, which I do think would be a fantastic thing to help the teachers. But I do think it should be a separate motion outside of this so that we can make sure that that's separate. But I think the bandwidth is going to be a benefit whether teachers are sitting in their classroom with a Chromebook moving forward years from now even, um, with students, if it's another year and they're part time in the classroom. I think it's a really worthwhile investment. And um, this might need another clarification from Mr. Rodriguez. Uh, you mentioned that this, it's going to take thirty days to get the everything coordinated anyway. So um, it seems to me like if we want to move forward with this, we really ought to think about uh, getting the process going so that we can make sure that the kids are going to have, and the teachers are going to have access to it sooner rather than later. Because if we wait until October first or September first, it won't be ready until the middle of October. Thank you.
Yeah, that's, yeah, Comcast said to us, I think yesterday, they would need a thirty day lead time just because they're just as busy installing, you know, just as anybody else, so.
Okay, thank you, uh, Ms. Bishop.
Uh, so that actually kind of heads off on my question, which was, uh, school starts September eighth. Um, it seems like less than thirty days. We don't have the equipment that we need for the classrooms, we don't have the bandwidth. Um, and we don't have all of the current numbers. So are we on track for getting all of this up and going for the beginning of school?
Beginning of remote or beginning of hybrid.
Well, remote starts September eighth, so I would think that we would need all of this in place September seventh.
That's, I can say that's not going to happen with confidence.
So how, how does that work? Do we need to revisit the calendar?
Well, I guess the question is, um, I, it goes back to Dr. Mosley, Dr. McKinney and Mr. Parker. Um, and I know we got the remote learning dra- draft handbook this evening or this afternoon. Um, it might be worthwhile to table this matter and have a da, a ta, a date next week to come back um, to have all of these questions answered by Dr. Mosley or Dr. McKinney or uh, Mr. Parker. Um, but we could certainly.
I think we need to end.
Oh, go ahead.
I think we need to enter into whatever contract we need to enter into. I mean Comcast has a hard enough time coming to my house for a scheduled visit. I think we need to move on getting the equipment and stuff that we need now. I mean, if we need to readdress dates and and calendars and and what we're doing, we need to do that another time. But we have to get going on this. So I think we do need to make this motion tonight. I think we do need to give Comcast the thirty days that it needs to get everything up and going so we can provide an education.
Okay, okay, thank you, Ms. Bishop. Uh, Ms. Johnson and then Mr. Guarino.
Thank you, I think the motion, I think we could probably get this done. Aren't we having a special board event meeting on Monday?
Yes.
Okay, why don't I make a motion to hold this until Monday, till we get all the information? And then on Monday we can make a sound decision. It's not going to make a difference, what is this, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, five days? Not going to make a difference either way. And table it to Monday's meeting. And this way we can have all the information, my questions, everybody else's questions answered. And then this way it's a sound decision. I mean, I ask quite a bit of questions and thank you, Ms. Zine for agreeing with me on part of it. I'll take part of not always everything. But I think a lot of questions still need to be answered. How many teachers are going to be coming in the school? How many teachers are going to be remoting? What's the true cost of this? How much time do we have? I, I, it, it's just we're voting on something and we don't have the full picture here. And that's not right, because then we get questions from the public and we're saying, well, we don't have all the answers. That's not the right answer. So I'm going to make the motion to table this until Monday's special board event meeting.
I second that. Um, the motion to table is um, not um, debatable. Um, so just to be clear, um, Ms. Johnson, your motion is to table it until Monday or until we get the answers?
Well, I'd like to have the answers by Monday, so then this way it's not a long drawn out process here. Today is Wednesday, five days isn't going to make that much of a difference for Comcast either way. And this way we have all the answers and we're voting on this and we have all the answers to put, to vote on it. Right now there's still answers up in the air, so you can vote on anything you want. I'm not going to support this. And I'll probably be the only vote that won't support this, but we don't have answers to everything.
Okay, thank, thank you, Ms. Johnson. So the, the motion to table.
I thought was debatable.
That's what I was just going to reiterate, the motion to table is not debatable. So, Mr. Guarino, could you please call the roll?
We have a second?
So.
I seconded it.
Oh, okay, sorry about that.
Okay.
So, because it's not debatable, there cannot be further discussion. I see you, Ms. Gilio, do you have a procedural question?
I'm going to debate it, I'm just, um, I'm just concerned that we set up Monday's meeting with a specific purpose in mind. And that if we spend an hour and a half of that night talking about this, we're not going to get to why we originally scheduled Monday night's meeting, that's all. So I don't know if her motion is just to table it until, if it's to table it until Monday. I, I just don't know how that works with our calendar, the way we plan things, that's all. So thank you for hearing me.
Okay, okay, Mr. Guarino, could you please call the roll on the motion to table?
On the motion to table, Ray Guarino votes no. Paula Johnson?
Yes.
Uh, Sandra Zine?
Yes.
Jen Bishop? No. Uh, Sharon Gilio?
I just need a clarification, is the motion to table it until Monday or just to table it?
I think it's till Monday.
Is that, is that how the motion reads?
Ms. Johnson?
Yes, till Monday.
Then um, I vote no.
Jessica Brown?
No.
Heather Raymond?
Yes.
Uh, Dottie Odin?
Yes.
One, two, three, four yeses, one, two, three, four noes. The motion to table fails.
Okay.
Four to four tie.
Thank you, so we've been round and round on this, everyone.
I haven't spoken a second time on it.
Okay, but Mr. Guarino would like to speak a second time. And then I'd like to move forward, Mr. Guarino.
Okay. Um, I just wanted to say that um, I don't think we need to change the calendar. I don't think we need to, uh, what, what's been going on uh, since March of last year is that this district has been retrofitting teaching. That's what we've been doing. Uh, for a lack of a better expression, we've been flying by the seat of our pants. And to, to have an exact plan and 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 the exact equipment to do everything, um, I, I think we would never get off the ground. Um, so we're, when we do start remote learning, we're going to be doing remote learning much in the same way we've been doing it since March, without the bandwidth, without all the equipment. So I don't think we need to, to wait on this. I think we need to vote, vote on it, and I think we need to pass it. And as we, as this district moves forward, give the, give the district, the administration flexibility to move up and to change things and to make it better as we go along, rather than wait on it. Um, and I think they need, I think they need the flexibility to move on it so that as we go into remote learning and then we go into the hybrid, they can adapt and bring these things on board and make it better as we go along. That's, so, so I really think we need to, to vote yes on this. And to, and to give administration uh, the tools that they need and to retrofit. What we're doing is we're retrofitting teaching, we're retrofitting school. And 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 I think teachers know what I'm talking about. They, they do the best with the resources they have and they move on until they can get better resources. So I, I, I think we need to move on it and uh, I hope we can vote, uh, vote this, uh, vote for this today. Thanks.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Guarino. Um, can uh, you please go ahead and call the roll um, on the motion to um, ha, approve the district um, expanding the bandwidth to eight G?
Okay. Ray Guarino votes yes. Paula Johnson?
No.
Sandra Zine?
No.
Jen Bishop?
Yes.
Uh, Sharon Gilio?
Yes.
Jessica Brown?
Yes.
Heather Raymond?
Yes.
Dottie Odin?
Yes.
I have two noes and one, two, three, four, five, six yeses, the motion carries six to two.
I think you, everybody, that was um, much more discussion um, and questions than I had anticipated for this evening. Um, can, um, does anyone have any objection to asking administration to um, report back to us on um, what the principals and um, teachers um, and Dr. McKinney and uh, Mr. Parker um, think they need as far as equipment for streaming, what they think the um, teachers and the remote learning plan and the hybrid plan would call for as far as streaming? Um, so that we can um, find out uh, what we need as far as equipment or not.
I think that makes sense.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Gilio. Um, all right, so we'll, we'll schedule um, a time in the next week or two to come back um, and discuss that part of this issue. Okay, um, Ms., uh, thank you so much, Mr. Rodriguez, for being here, for answering our questions. Um, I have no doubt that you will need to create another PowerPoint for us when we come back on this.
It was my pleasure. Have a great night.
Thank you, right, um, and Ms. Gingras, thank you so much for your patience. Um, I know that you have um, an update for us on athletics. Um, that's something that many, many, many families, um, including mine, um, have been anxiously uh, waiting to hear on. So I'm not going to talk anymore, I'm going to hand it over to you.
All right, thank you very much, I'm just going to go ahead and share my screen here. Start, start the presentation here. Everybody see that okay? Okay, um, first of all, thank you for taking time to let me come back and speak to you. When I was here about two months ago at the end of June, talking about summer workouts, it was mentioned that you wanted me to come back at the end of July so that we could talk about the actual start of our fall seasons. But since the fall seasons were delayed about three weeks, um, they did not start Friday or this past Monday. They've been delayed to, until September eighth. So here I am at this point to talk about what does fall athletics look like? Um, as everybody knows, uh, participation in athletics is completely voluntary, unlike attending school. You know, students need to go to school. But for many of our students, it's a, it's a critical part of their educational experience. And athletics provide for physical, social and emotional development. Um, athletics really is the vehicle for social emotional learning. So one of the things, this is our question tonight, just like being in the classroom, um, we're looking for this body for us to get the approval from the National School District that we can move forward with all of our intraschoolistic athletics for both the middle and the high schools starting this fall. We have been spending lots of time throughout the spring and the summer planning for what fall sports would look like under COVID. But there's still a lot of work that needs to be done, a lot of education of our parents, our students and our staff. So we're really looking to be able to make this decision. I know we've talked about this during the budget process as well as during my presentation in June. But just a, a reminder why education-based athletics is so important. They are very different from students playing recreational sports or for club teams. Students who participate in school athletics often earn better grades in school. They often have a positive mental health and they're generally physically healthy and have increased social development. Many of our students develop and exercise leadership skills through athletics. Um, Mr. Stephen Norris, our, our student representative here on the board is, is a great example of that. If students are not playing for their schools, where will they be? Um, during school athletics, we're going to do everything practical and possible to keep them safe and to reduce the spread of COVID. But we can't say the same thing if we don't have this opportunity for our students, not knowing where they would be, either hanging out with friends, playing a club sport, possibly engaging in other activities, not under the guidance of school protocols and safety measures. Thus, we're potentially increasing their exposure to COVID and the possibility of them bringing it back to our students in school. In July, our national governing body, the NFHS, published an article entitled, "With Safety Measures in Place, Students Need Sports and Performing Arts for Mental and Emotional Wellness." The article goes on to address the uncertainty of our times, certainly, and that what might work for one school district or one community is not a one size fits all. The executive director, Dr. Carissa Niehoff, states in the article that we believe the resumption of in-person classes, sports and other activities is crucial to the growth, development and mental and emotional wellness of our nation's youth. So education-based athletics and other co-curricular activities is vital to our students. Quickly to review, um, we talked about this in June, the different risk levels. We were approved and have been doing our summer workouts. Students have been in small groups on campus and that has been going very well. So we are looking to take the next step, the team-based practice. The start of official seasons for both middle and hi, and high school has been postponed to September eighth. At this point in time, sports would return almost as we know them. Um, inside the lines of the game, it would look relatively normal. There'd be scrimmaging, there'd be drills, students would be competing against each other. The sport itself would look relatively the same. But what goes on prior to this practice or the game outside of the lines of the game would be different. And we would do everything that we possibly can do um, with our coaches, our students, our fans to help reduce the spread. Once that season starts on September eighth, up to the first game or first contest, the teams would be allowed to scrimmage against each other. That's it, they wouldn't be allowed to scrimmage against other teams. Um, and then at the end of September, we would go into full competition between teams of a relative local geographic area. One of the things that we are looking to do is completely delete all of the schedules that exist right now, start from scratch so that we're playing only five or six different schools, maybe seven schools rather than the twenty-two that are in our division. Um, we feel as an athletic director group that that would help, again. Again, if there's an outbreak, then it's contained within those. Also, if you look at our geographic area, we're all about in the same um, situation in terms of the number of cases. And then the final thing would be what happens come tournament time, when we might break out of that geographic region. Infection risk by sports, both the NFHS and the NHIAA have put the sports in different categories. So lower risk where social distancing is possible, very limited person-to-person contact, moderate risk where there's close contact at times, and obviously the high risk where there's sustained contact. So looking specifically at our Nashua fall sports, these are our lower-risk sports. Um, anything that has an asterisk next to it are the sports that we offer at both the middle and the high school level. If it doesn't have an asterisk, it is only offered at the high school. So those three sports are the lower risk. The middle is the moderate risk. And then the only two we have in the fall at the higher risk are football and competitive cheer. So looking at the four phases that I brought to you in June, phase one and phase two, we have done. Um, we started very slowly with the rollout of our summer workouts. And then we ramped them up a little bit, little bit larger groups. We did allow access to our weight room and our gyms. So at this point, we're looking, oh, one other thing I wanted to add. During phase two, both of our high school marching bands also started um, small group rehearsals with their groups as well. And we have been in very close conversation. Not that I oversee the bands, but they've been using most, if not all, of the protocols that we've been using for our summer workouts. So moving into phase three, moving on to actual mandatory practices and tryouts. Um, that's what we're looking to do. And then phase four, once we get to team competition with other schools. So phase one and two, we've done. Phase three is in, and four is where we're asking to go. And I just want to give a quick shout out to our two high school um, custodial staffs for everything that they have done to help us move into that phase two with the additional cleaning of the bathrooms and the weight rooms and things like that. So appreciation to them. This slide is different from the presentation that you have um, over the weekend. This is all of the data from our summer workouts. So you can see that we have had almost 400 students participating in completely voluntary, small-group workouts. That number probably would have been bigger had we had additional coaches and our cohort sizes could have been bigger. Um, we had 14 fall sports and three winter sports participating over the summer. So here are the dates, kind of the timeline. So as I mentioned, both high school and middle school have delayed the first practice or tryout to September 8th. The high school has said, even though tryouts happen two days earlier, that golf matches can start on September 10th. That is our lowest-risk sport. Um, people have been golfing pretty much all summer. Then on September 18th, this next group of activities could take place, obviously with moder- modifications to the setup and things like that. Then on the 21st is when all of our middle school sports will start their games. And then the final one to start would be football and our competitive cheer. So last year, just to give you a sense of how many students participate during fall, and I would like to point out to you on your copy, the middle school participant says 951. That's a mistake on my part. Um, that was the whole year last year, not just one season. So I apologize for that. Um, again, this is almost 1,000 students between our middle school and our high schools that are, that participated in our fall activities. If we don't provide this opportunity for them, they're going to go find something else to do. Hopefully recreationally, hopefully athletically, hopefully outside in the sunshine. And I'm just concerned that, like I said earlier, if they're not with us in our safety protocols and all the measures we're going to put into place, then we're putting them more at risk. This is our current fall registration. This is also data that was updated yesterday, so it's a little different than what you have. Um, the numbers are a little bit lower than last year's participation, but I'm going to be honest with you. We have a lot of people who register at the last minute. We have a lot of people that register the day tryout start. So now that they don't start until September 8th, um, we anticipate these numbers will ramp up. And I also know there's several families waiting to determine, are we a go or are we not? So again, we have several families waiting for the decision. Back in June, we talked about these six areas of concern. Obviously, they haven't gone away. I'm just not going to go through them all again. Each item will be continued to be addressed as we move forward. All of these are very important as we help to keep our children safe playing sports. There is a lot of information out there. Um, these guiding documents, the CDC, the New Hampshire Safe Safer at Home Guidelines, the NHIAA, the NFHS, the NHADA Task Force. I have attended several classes and workshops and meetings at the state level and the national level specifically on what do we do and how can we reopen our athletic fields and our gyms to our students? So there's a lot of information. Um, can't possibly tell you every document that's been researched and and mitigated. We, I meet weekly with our division athletic directors, state athletic directors, and national athletic directors on what's going on in different parts of our state and our country. Even today, we had a meeting and, you know, people in the North Country are talking, there's, there's one case in a county. You know, they're, they're ready to go full go. Looking at the data today, where our numbers are coming down, and that's promising. Um, you know, I know people are talking about a spike, but hopefully we can move forward and keep people safe. So moving into what the official season would look like, sports would conduct their tryouts and run practices very similar to what they've done in the past. They'd be able to do drills, skills, scrimmaging. You know, Steven's a goalie. People would be shooting soccer balls at him. There may, might be close contact between soccer players. Football players would be doing their, learning how to tackle safely and all of those things. We would ask our coaches to minimize person-to-person contact as much as is practical. But yet our students still need to be prepared so that they're safe in the aspects of their sport once they get into those competitions. We would be cleaning and sanitizing balls and equipment after every practice. There are also processes in place to clean and sanitize game balls during play. Um, I can speak specifically to volleyball because I'm on the state committee for that, that we've specified that to host a state volleyball match this fall, you have to have minimum of four game balls. And at timeouts in between sets, you rotate out the ball so that ball comes off the court, is sanitized before it's put back into play. Um, that's just one example of the things that we're putting in. No practices um, for the beginning would start before 3 o'clock. I'm still working with our director of transportation to look at being able to run our bus routes to bring our students back to school for practices. Many of our students, as we know, the whole month of September, students are going to be home remote learning. Many of our students may not have access to a parent who's able to take their lunch break when they need it to get a ride to school for practice. So we're working on that. Those details are still being worked out. I mentioned the regionalizing of the high school schedules. Pretty much the middle school schedules are regionalized now as they are. Um, those schools, our middle school programs don't travel very far. As part of opening up high school sports, we normally have a preseason night and do impact testing. That would have taken place last week. Um, so obviously modifications need to happen to that because we're not going to bring 500 people into an auditorium together. So the informational portion of the night, we're going to do online through video and a Google Form sign-off that people have attended and watched it. Many families, as I said, have already registered for fall sports. So to add that into the registration, I would feel bad telling almost 600 high school families, sorry, I'm deleting your registration. You need to start over. So that's why we would add a secondary sign-off. We've come up with a plan for safe impact testing. For those who may not know, impact testing is an online cognitive test which helps our athletic trainers and medical staff in the event a student has a, sustains a head injury during the season. So we've earmarked August 31st and September 2nd, those two evenings. Students would have to register for a specific time that they would come in. Um, we have four different time slots. And we're using four computer labs at Nashua North where the normal capacity of that is over 100 in those four computer labs. So we would spread out only 40 students in the four labs using every other computer, if not further apart than that, if there aren't as many people signed up for that time slot. Students would have to be wearing their masks, social distancing would be in place. And we would give each student a pair of disposable gloves as they came in so they're not touching a computer that someone else has just touched. Um, Mr. Rodriguez and I did discuss that, that this would be the safest way to do it without having to clean the, the computers in between and then them sit there before the next student could use them. In addition to this presentation, you were sent, I believe it was 22 pages um, document. I'm not going to go through that whole document in case anybody was worried that I was going to. But I just want everyone to know that I've spent a lot of time trying to address items um, that affect our athletic events, both practices as well as games. This is just a list. I believe there's something like 32 different categories that have been addressed for each of our fall sports. Just for one example, um, the event personnel. So at a field hockey game, you need someone to run the scoreboard and you need someone to do the clock. That's it. Those are the only people that would be allowed at the score table. You know, their friends wouldn't be able to be there. Additional extra people wouldn't be at the score table so that they could sit at opposite ends, keep their social distancing, wear their masks, and still help provide support for the game. So again, that 22-plus doc, page document is um, available on the board website under the um, agendas and materials. So these are just the additional items that are addressed in that document per sport. And that was sent to you on Friday. I think it has already changed five times since then. Um, because every time I think of something new, I add to it. So transportation, we talked a little bit about getting the kids back for practice, but getting students to other schools for away games. We would have as, as much as is practical, one student per seat. Obviously, if people are siblings and they live together, they could sit in the same seat. Students would have to wear their masks. More buses could be required for each away event. Rather than a JV and a varsity team being on a bus together, we might have to send two different buses. We, we would also allow parents to drive their own child. Not a car full of neighborhood children, but their own child to an away event if they're available to do that. Um, attendance, having spectators at events is a hot topic. So essential personnel at an athletic event are these seven categories. Um, students, coaches, officials, event staff. Myself, for example, running the event are considered event staff. Medical staff, security, and police detail. Sometimes we run our own security, other times we need to have police there. If it's a high-profile game, if we are limiting spectators, we'll probably need more police than we would if the stadium was full. And we might need staff or media to televise or live broadcast. Um, other media and spectators are considered nonessential. So if we look at having spectators, one of the things um, in the most recent nurses document that came out is travel within New England. Just stay in New England. Don't leave New England and you're fine. Um, or you're less likely to have an outbreak. So we would only allow New England residents, you know, do we, do we limit it to two fans a person per participant? Do we say four? Do we say immediate family? Do we say no fans at all? And then if we were to have fans, do we screen them? Do we take their temperature? If so, how, how would we go about doing that? Um, we've talked a lot within our division about hoping to gain consistency among this. So I just wrote out some suggestions of our different fields. One of the webinars I attended, I thought this was a kind of a neat idea that if you picture our high school fields, if we have a soccer field painted out on the, on the field, could we also paint family boxes? So they'd be six by six boxes around the field that, okay, you as a family, pick a box and stay in that box until, for the duration of the game. That way, that would help with social distancing and things like that. Stellows Stadium, we just did this with our high school graduations where each graduation had about 200 students and each student was allowed for family members. Um, seats were marked off, limited to immediate family. So I think that was pretty successful and we could do a, a similar thing. Most of our events that take place at Stellows are not 200 students big. Um, cross-country meets, that's a little more difficult because if you've ever been to a cross-country meet, people are everywhere. They don't just stand in one place and watch the meet. So we would still have to limit it so that as people are crisscrossing the course, that they would be able to maintain their social distancing. Our golf course, I apologize, my clock's going off, always seems to do that. Um, our golf courses have told us that fans would not be allowed. That's their restrictions right now for the public, so it would be no different. And we would have spe- spectators wearing masks at all times while they're at one of our events. Moving on to inside for volleyball, this is the only fall sport that takes place inside. Both of our high school gyms are very large and I feel that we could accommodate some spectators. So normally, both bleachers on both sides of the gym are pulled out, including the side the team sits on. We would change that, that it would be only the opposite side of where the teams are to keep people away from the kids. Um, but inside because of space and that we're inside, we would limit fans to only two per participant. Again, still wearing masks. We also have volleyball at our middle schools. If you've ever been to our three middle school gyms, they're very, very different. Elm Street is very large. So we, I think we could keep the two fans. Penachuck, the same thing. Fairgrounds is a much smaller gym, so I think limiting it to one fan per participant would be necessary to maintain social distancing. So just looking at some of the needs that, that we would need to do and still work out all of the details. Entries, entrances to the facilities being monitored, monitoring spectators, the cleaning, the face coverings, the social distancing, um, the bathroom facilities. Obviously, Stellows has, has staff. Someone else would be responsible for that. The high schools, it would be either our, um, if it's outside, our plan-op staff, the porta potty companies, or if it's inside, it would be our custodial staff. Supplies and signs reminding people of their masks and social distancing and all of those things. Whether we're charging admission or not, we might look into some sort of contactless ticketing platform, something online, and then looking at how do we broadcast our events. Um, so that is about it. And I know I talked really fast and that was a lot of information. I'm sorry. So I don't know if my questions, and then again, just looking, you know, are, are we moving forward and having all of our sports in Nashua this fall?
Thank you very much, uh, Ms. Jengres. That was, um, as usual, a very, very um, thorough presentation. Are you looking for a specific motion from the board this evening?
Um, again, obviously, that's up to you. And, and Dr. Mosley has been supportive and has, has said right from the beginning that he would like to see us have our full complement of fall sports. Um, my colleagues across the state, everybody is looking for definitive districts from decisions from each district so that we know who we can schedule against. What sports is each team, each district playing? And can we move forward and start preparing for that and setting up some schedules?
So the motion that you would be looking for would be to um, authorize the district to proceed with phase three and phase four of the plan?
Or if it's, or if it's, you're just saying um, our usual fall sports, the complement of normal fall sports?
Okay.
Um, I just, I, I'm not sure if we say phase three, if that will confuse people because everybody seems to have their different phases.
Oh, that's a good point. Okay. Um, Ms. Gilio, you had a question?
Actually, it's just a comment. And I, and I just, I can't say enough about this plan and, and how Ms. Jengres has been managing this all summer long, along with all her other duties on the task force and everything else that she's been doing. And, and personally, I have no children in the school right now, but if I did, I'm sure that I would be comfortable supporting this. Um, because I do believe, as she said, that, that athletics and the performing arts, I mean, that there are all kinds of reasons our kids go to school and we need to open as many opportunities to them right now as are safely possible. So I would be in support of it.
Thank you.
Gilio, Ms. Dean? Oh, Ms. Dean, you're on mute, my dear.
I'm sorry. I make a motion that we support this program as presented and move forward. Can you hear me?
Yeah, so Ms. Dean's motion was to um, approves or supports- Yeah. So Ms. Dean's motion was to approves or support the athletic program for the fall as presented?
Yes.
Seconded?
Seconded by Mr. Guarino really quickly. Any discussion on Ms. Gilio's motion? Uh, Ms., I'm sorry. Ms. Dean's motion?
I just did want to say to Mrs. Gingras, I was seized to be impressed by her ability to articulate exactly what she wants to as fast as anyone I've ever seen able to do it. And for that I am eternally grateful. You make what could have been awfully difficult much easier. And I, I'm so proud to have you as part of our district and I'm so glad that our kids have you because you're worth 500. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Uh, Ms. Odin had a question? And then Ms. Bishop after Ms. Odin.
Thank you. Great plan Lisa, very detailed. I have one question. What happens should a student test positive? How many, how often will they be tested or will they be tested at all unless they're feeling ill? And if a student tests positive, what happens to the team?
We are looking to continue our daily screenings as we have done all summer with our student athletes and our coaches. So they'll be screened with the, are you feeling well? The list of, of symptoms, have they traveled? Have they come in contact with someone and their temperature? We have had a few situations this summer where we have had to send students home and they have to come back either with, if they have symptoms, they have had to get a doctor's note or a negative COVID test before they could return to the team. With our students who have traveled or come in contact with someone, they have had to stay away from their summer workouts for 14 days. So I'm assuming we would continue that. If someone contracts COVID, if someone tests positive, then I would defer to Mr. Parker and Dr. McKinney and Dr. Mosley and the plan that the district has with the, that was outlined by the New Hampshire State Nurses Association. And I would rely on Mrs. Lopez in, in order to how to, how to control that and how to deal with that. So obviously if someone on the team contracted it, then everybody else on that team has been in contact with someone with COVID. So they would have to step away from the program for 14 days.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Gingras. Is that, is the New Hampshire Nurses Association's guidelines on our website as well? Under our COVID section?
Do believe I saw it there. Yes.
Okay, good. I just want to make sure that parents and members of the public are able to access that easily. All right. I have Ms. Bishop and then Mr. Norris.
Uh, thank you. Yes, Ms. Gingras, this is a fantastic plan. It's very detailed. It's very concise. It covers a lot of area. I'm a little hesitant about voting on starting it yet because I don't feel like we know enough about the finances, about how we're going to be paying for PPE. I mean, we just had a hour and some odd long discussion about starting up with broadband or bandwidth. I guess I would go to some families do sports, but all families need education. And I think we need to know what our finances look like before we commit to transportation. Get a PPE that sports needs. My kids do sports. I don't relish needing to look at, you know, where we're going to be re-accommodating the budget to get kids' education. But I think the priority needs to be getting the kids back into the classroom and getting their remote education going up. I have a teenager that's going to be very mad if we aren't going to be doing field hockey. But I think we need to have a more comprehensive look about what the rest of the district is going to look like and how much it's going to cost before we can commit to the extracurriculars. I mean, they're extra. They're fantastic. They're what bolsters our kids. It's what gets a lot of our kids into school and focusing. But it's also the frosting. And if we don't have the cake to build it on, I mean, that's, it's unfortunate, but I, I think we need to hold off and see how much everything else is going to cost first. Mrs. Raymond, may I address the budget question?
Yes, of course. And then I have other people's hands. I see you. I'll read the list.
Apologize for my dogs barking in the back. We have been ordering PPE all summer. In the springtime, we, as you know, didn't have our spring season. So we have all of the supplies that we normally order for spring seasons. Baseballs, tennis balls, softballs, lacrosse balls, all of those things that I normally buy every single year that cost probably about, I would say $10,000 to $15,000. We didn't have to spend that money this year. So that's additional money that is already in the athletics budget that can be earmarked for other things. Likewise with our athletic training supplies. They had an excess of supplies from the spring because we didn't have a spring season. So our, excuse me, our athletic training supplies already this year were less than half of what I normally spent. But I spent a little bit more getting more alcohol wipes and more face masks. I got our trainers' face shields and gowns and things like that. So it's, it's in the athletic budget already and I wouldn't expect needing more than that. I've also gone through New Hampshire DHHS that has been providing summer school, school-related summer activities, free PPE. So I've gotten some touch, contactless thermometers from them. We've gotten some masks from them. We've gotten some things like that directly from them that we haven't had to spend money for. So I know that doesn't address all of the expenses, but there, there is, it's in the budget and I, I feel confident we can stay within that. In terms of staffing, we do have a, a staffing line in our athletic budget also that we could use for the additional event personnel that I intend that we would need. No, I have no doubt that your, the, the presentation that you put together, the budget that you have is on point and accurate. I just don't know what the school budget looks like. It may have come out today in the, the plan that we got. I didn't get to look at it because I was still at work when, when it was emailed. So I don't know what the budget looks like to accommodate all of the things we need for the schools. And until we've seen that, I, I just think we need to build off of that. I 100% want to do everything that you've said. I just, I think it needs to wait until the final plan for the schools has been vetted and hashed out. But thank you so much. I always enjoy your presentations and your enthusiasm.
Thank you.
That was it.
Thank you, Ms. Bishop. Okay. I have a list. Mr. Norris, Ms. Johnson, Mr. Guarino. Did someone else have their hand up that I've missed? I don't see anybody else. So, Mr. Norris?
Uh, thank you. So I just got a couple of questions, but before I start, it's nice to hear such a specific plan that doesn't really leave anything up in the air. It's a nice change of scenery as of recently. So I might be getting a little, little ahead of myself here, but I know currently we have, you have to play a certain amount of division games in order to play in the tournament. I, I'm assuming that that would get waived probably if we were playing our six teams. So I don't know if that would be our end of the year tournament or go back to normal or?
Yep. So both middle school and high school leagues have both said that they would have open tournaments. So you could play no games all season and just practice and at the end be in the tournament, other than golf and football. Football is still being discussed, not knowing exactly what's going to happen with football. And golf, because they feel it's such a low-risk sport, they need to have 10 matches. So if you play a golf, a normal golf match, there's four teams at a time. So each time I play, I'm playing three matches already. So they would only need three or four dates to get those 10, 10 matches in. So golf is the only one that is sticking to a minimum number of matches and standings. Everything else at this point would be an open tournament. Thank you, Stephen. I forgot about that.
Uh, and then I also got a couple of questions about protocols. I know we've addressed this at a previous meeting, but are, would students still be, would be allowed to drive themselves? I know you talked about parents and I know that's kind of a, a hot topic with people have been talking about it for a while. But if there is no fans allowed, I'm assuming students probably wouldn't be able to drive themselves, right?
We've talked about that. That's just a big liability, even with students who are 18. You know, you're, when you attend our schools and you participate in our programs, you're still our responsibility. Even if you're 18, 19, 20, 21, for some of our special education students. Even though you are an adult legally, you're still our responsibility. And if, from the time you left school to driving to Merrimack, let's say, God forbid you were into an accident, that's still falls on the school district. So students would not be allowed. We have discussed that within our division. What do we do with the parent that just drove their child? So that's why we're, we're really leaning towards allowing minimal fans to accommodate for that parent that may drive their child.
Yeah. I, I don't think my mom would want to drive all the way to Keene or something or anywhere to watch. So.
That was the other thing that I was going to say, that the nice part about it being regionalized is your mom wouldn't be driving you to Rochester or Dover or Winnetka or Keene. So they would at least be local games.
Uh, I have one last. So, uh, are we going to try to create a consistent protocols between all the, like whatever six schools we play in the regions? Or are we going to try to like say, oh, Merrimack might allow us to have fans? We might not. Or are we going to try to make it all the same?
We are going to try to be as consistent as possible. But obviously I cannot tell another school district and another athletic director how to run their programs. Much like Dr. Mosley can't call the Merrimack superintendent and tell him what to do. We are very collegial. We work very well together, especially those of us that are in the same geographic region. So I feel very confident we could come up with pretty, some pretty consistent protocols, to be honest with you. That document, that 22-page document that I shared with everybody. Many of my colleagues have taken that and adapted that to their own schools as well. So I think we're already on the step to being very consistent.
All right. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Norris. Ms. Johnson?
Thank you very much. Uh, question. Do parents pay towards the sports of their children?
Yes. At the high school level, we have user fees for all of our programs.
Okay. User fees. So last March, when everything basically got shut down, what happened to the user fees that some of them had?
So we did not, we refunded all spring user fees. So anybody who had paid for the spring season already, those were refunded to every family.
Okay. I'm going to support this because I think the interaction with their peers is very important, especially at this point in time because our students are not being able to be in school with their friends and being around their friends. And I think this is a good thing for our students at this point in time. I'd like to basically get an idea what the cost is going to be, but people just voted on the technology without having a full cost benefit out there. So I think this, you know, and are we going to be having the parents pay any user fees towards this again?
Yes. Yes. User fees. If we move forward with a season, we would charge the same user fee. There has been a question, would it be a reduction because the season was delayed? Um, and my feeling is probably not because we may incur other expenses.
Okay. So, so we'll, I thought I'd interrupt. So we'll offset some of the costs here.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much for your hard work. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Guarino?
Thank you, Madam President. I, I want to thank Ms. Gingras for that excellent presentation. And it seems as though she has everything covered. And I am going to support this motion because sports is part of an education. Just like math, just like reading, it is part of a child's education. Um, I know we call them extracurricular. A lot of times they are extracurricular, but they're actually, sports is part of a child's education. Education is about building a, a strong mind and a strong body. And it improves cognition. It improves intellectual capacity. And I believe we need to get our kids moving. Even those kids that aren't on sports teams, if there's other extracurricular they could do, even if, even if they're not on, on one of the teams. And I think it's important for their social and emotional wellbeing as Mrs. Johnson just said. And so I'm going to support it because I believe it's part of education. And I want to thank Ms. Gingras for that excellent presentation. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Guarino. I don't have any other hands. I'd just like to say that I'm a little nervous about volleyball. I've been in the gyms. I know how big they are. But I'm still nervous about volleyball. So I, I just want to make sure that as we move up and down with our hybrid plan, that there's also an understanding that sports will reconsider as we move up and down as well.
And that's definitely an understanding. We know that there may be times where if there's spikes in Nashville, we may need to put a pause on the season. We may need to end the season early. It, it all depends on, as we've said through the whole reopening plan, it all depends on the epidemiology and what's going on in Nashville. We just want the ability to be able to start. Obviously we're going to be screening and monitoring and doing everything that we can. I know that there's a lot of concern about volleyball because it's the only thing that's inside. My, my statements about that is the fact that we're, we're doing several things to help keep distance, obviously inside the lines. We can't control girls coming into contact with each other. We can't control one girl sweating on the ball and now it touching another girl. But we're going to do everything we can in terms of having sanitizer and sanitizing the balls in between. If you've ever been to a volleyball match, they normally change benches in between sets. That will not be happening. We've removed that rule. So we're doing everything practical. Then one of the nice pieces also is volleyball is the only fall sport that plays inside. Cheer practices inside, but everything else is usually outside. So there would be less people inside than there will be when we get to winter. And I know winter is still a ways away, but that's going to be the next step is now that we, you know, play our fall sports and hopefully knock on wood, we can get all the way through our season. What happens with our indoor sports of basketball and wrestling and hockey and swimming and gymnastics and all of those things? So I, I understand your concerns. There are concerns about volleyball because it's inside. But we're going to do everything that we can do to put extra measures in place to mitigate those concerns.
Wait. Oh, sorry. I was having trouble with my mute versus unmute. Ms. Brown, did you have a hand?
Um, I just had a question actually about the longevity of the budget that's already built in. So you mentioned that you saved about $10,000 in the spring with saving materials and doing great ordering of things. I think, I appreciate that, saving money. If we get to a point late in the season, if you're expanding our transportation budget because we're needing multiple buses to get to places or if we are ordering extra PPE and different things like that, would you, do you have a plan in place when that budget is gone as when we run out of money? If, if, do you think that that's going to happen? Do you foresee that that could be a problem for winter sport, impacting winter or spring sports?
I have been very stringent on ordering what I normally order at this point in time in the year. I have, if I can think off the top of my head, I think it's around $45,000 in the operating budget for yearly equipment and supplies that I order. Normally by this time it is all spent and I've already dipped into the athletic expendable trust fund. At this point, I've only spent about 12 of that. So I've been very deliberate in knowing that I'm going to have to move some money around later on. Um, and I know Mr. Donovan isn't here tonight, but being a, a numbers person, a former math person, I watch my budget very, very carefully and try to spend it to the penny, not over and not under. So I can't promise you, but I, I'm doing everything that I can and, and being very deliberate on what is being purchased.
Well, I, I gotta, I always commend you on your meticulous presentations and record keeping. It's always very impressive. So I am a little bit concerned specifically, I, I am fully in support of sports. I think they're going to be the example and what's going to launch us back into the classroom at some point. I think like the work that you guys have been doing this summer has been fantastic. The fact that you're not seeing spikes, the teams are working together, close, relatively close contact. I think that's fantastic and I'm glad to hear that. So I do definitely want to support the co-curriculars going on through the school year. However, I'm still a little bit concerned because we haven't finalized the transportation contract. And if we're talking about needing multiple buses to events. And if we're talking about needing multiple buses to events, um, I, that just makes me a little bit nervous for traveling opportunities. So in light of that, I, like I said, I would like to support the sports curriculum. However, I think we should move to table this until after we vote on the transportation contract and possibly adding a meeting next week to discuss.
I second.
Okay, Mr. Guarino, on the motion to table this until after we vote on the transportation con- uh, contract, which is under finance on our agenda this evening.
Okay, on the motion to table until after the, um, bus contract. Um, Ray Guarino votes no. Paula Johnson?
No.
Sandra Zee?
No.
Jen Bishop?
Yes.
Sharon Gilio?
Yes.
Jessica Brown?
Yes.
Heather Raymond?
No.
Uh, Dottie Oden?
No.
Motion fails. I have one, two, three no, three yeses and one, two, three, four, five, five, uh, no's. So the motion to table fails.
Okay, uh, thank you. Um, so I think, just looking at my list, I think pretty much everybody got a chance to speak on um, the question of fall sports. Um, so, um, there, yes? I'm sorry, did someone wish to speak? No, it must have just been a random noise. Uh, Mr. Guarino, can you call the roll on Ms. Deems' motion to approve the fall sports, um, plan as presented this evening?
Okay, on the motion, uh, Ray Guarino votes yes. Paula Johnson?
Yes.
Sandra Zee?
Yes.
Jen Bishop?
No.
Sharon Gilio?
Yes.
Jessica Brown?
Yes.
Heather Raymond?
Yes.
Dottie Oden?
Yes.
Okay, I have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven yeses, one no. The motion carries seven to one.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Gingras.
Thank you all very much. I think you made a lot of students and coaches and families very happy this evening. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate you being here this evening. Um, we appreciate the detail. Um, and just out of curiosity before you go, uh, the PPE for sports, where does that come from? Does that come from your budget or does that come from Plan Ops budget or does it come from someplace else?
Um, right now it's coming either from my budget or, as I mentioned, the free supplies that I've gotten from the state.
Okay.
Um, the cleaning supplies and some general school supplies is coming from Plan Ops and the CARES Act.
Okay, so I will revisit that with Mr. Smith, um, and Mr. Donovan as we move forward. Um, so please keep the board informed if you need anything else regarding sports.
Great. Thank you very much, everybody. Have a great night.
Thank you, Ms. Gingras. Okay, um, so that gets us through the first two items in our budget, no, in our budget, in our, um, agenda for this evening. Um, it was recently brought to my attention that we still have an active policy um, for our meetings that requires us to take a vote at the end of two hours on whether or not we want to continue the meeting or whether or not we want to adjourn and have our, um, the rest of our agenda at another time. Um, which would entail scheduling another meeting. Mr. Guarino?
Is that a policy?
It is a policy. We added it to, um, oh, I forget the B. It's B something, um, last year. I'd have to look it up again. Go ahead, Ms. Deem.
Is there anything really important that needs to be done tonight or can we postpone this until another time?
Um, I guess, uh, the question would be for Dr. Mosley. Are, are there any things on the agenda that you need approved um, this evening that couldn't wait, um, until next week? Um, I believe Ms. uh, Prue, Prue?
Prue.
Prue, Ms. Prue. Oh, I got it right the first time and then I messed it up. Um, was here regarding a preschool contract.
We need a preschool contract and there's some HR, uh, appointments we need approved by the board, please.
Okay, so I am looking for a motion then, um, either to continue to cover those items, to continue for half an hour, or to, um, adjourn. Deem?
I make a motion that we, that we cover the items that Dr. Mosley discussed and then we adjourn for the night.
Okay, so just to be clear. Okay, seconded by Ms. Gilio. Just to be clear, that is to, um, consider the HR and to consider, um, the contract regarding, excuse me, I'm sorry, um, I don't know what, which contract that is. What, what's the title of that? Does anyone know? I don't see it on the finance and ops. Well, whatever it is.
Is that the Adult Learning Center contract?
Yeah.
Um, may I speak?
Yes, please, Ms. Prue.
Okay, so it's for the contract for the First Church of Nashville?
Yes.
Yes. Somehow that didn't make it on my agenda. But I know it should be there because it was discussed at finance. Okay.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
It didn't, it didn't end up on the agenda because no motion was made during finance and operations.
Oh.
They were requesting further information and that's why Ms. Prue was here.
Got you. Okay, so to discuss it. Okay, Mr. Guarino?
Um, what about the, uh, bus contract? Um, it, would, would that be, um, under a time, uh, constraint?
You know, Dan's, I, I'll just kind of, I, I don't have, Dan, Dan was handling that with, uh, Dave Rossio. Um, so, you know, I think there was a motion earlier in the evening around perhaps having another meeting next week and then the bus contract would be discussed then. Um, but we are, it, no, we're not rolling out the buses and on September eighth, so we do have some time. But we should move on it within the next two weeks.
Okay, I, I thought it was on the agenda tonight.
Yeah, I would feel most comfortable if Dan was here to explain the contract because it's just.
All right, I, I just wanted to make sure that we, you know, we weren't under, under the gun for that.
It, it was on the agenda, but I think Dr. Mosley's correct. I think we have enough time.
Okay.
Uh, so there, there's not, there aren't a tremendous number of changes in it. There's, if you want to look at page six, when you get a chance, that's where, uh, the COVID nineteen case is, uh, determined in there. So, you know, uh, basically it's the same contract, similar contract we've had. Except on page six, you'll find some language that pertains to the COVID nineteen.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, uh, thank you. Ms. Johnson?
Do we need to approve the contract for the Adult Learning Center tonight? Is that in Clearway? Is that important for tonight?
I believe it is. But I think that one is time sensitive as well, if they're, to start on time and make their preparations. But, um, what day is today? Is Wednesday? We could, if we were to adjourn, um, at the, after those two items, we could meet on Tuesday next week, or I don't believe we could meet tomorrow.
No, I can't, I won't be available tomorrow.
Can we do a friendly amendment to add on the, um, Clearway contract to the first list?
Ms. Deem, are you comfortable with that?
I'm agreeable.
Okay, so the list is now, the, um, Adult Learning Center contract, uh, to get the information, um, that Ms. Prue has been waiting patiently to share with us. Um, and to work on, um, HR. Um, if there's no objections, I'll have Mr. Guarino call the roll.
Okay, on the motion, uh, Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms., Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Zee?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Guarino. Uh, just for people's reference, the policy is policy BEA. Um, which I couldn't come up with for some reason. Um, so, um, if we don't want to do this two-hour thing, um, then that needs to go back to policy. Um, in the meantime, um, I was reminded that we should follow our own policies. So, um, the next going in order, um, the next item would then be, um, Ms. Oden's and finance, uh, regarding the First Church preschool. Ms. Oden, can you catch us up, please? Ms. Oden? Okay. Uh, Ms. Prue, do you know?
I, I was talking and it, I, I was muted.
Okay, um, so can you just catch us up to what, um, the finance committee, um, had wanted for information, please?
Yes, they wanted, uh, Mr. Donovan to go back and see if he could negotiate the fact that, uh, we are not going to be there the first month and this possibility, we would miss more time in the building. Uh, so we wanted to, we asked him to go back and, uh, try to negotiate the contract with, uh, the First Church.
Okay. Does this need to be in non-public since it's about a contract and negotiations? Dr. Mosley is shaking his head yes.
Not at this point because, uh, we don't know, uh, maybe Dr. Mosley knows if Mr. Donovan was able to do that, but I, uh, he hasn't come back to finance and operations with that, so I don't have any information on that.
So I was just shaking, I don't have any information, but if we were going to talk about the negotiations or where we were in that point of negotiations or any movement, we would have to go into non-public.
Okay, I suggest that we do that briefly.
But I don't have, I don't have any updates. Dan, Dan Donovan, Dan, Dan didn't share any updates.
Right, but Ms. Prue is here and I, I don't know if, uh, the information that she has to share with us this evening um, would be public information or would fall under, um, non-public, um, under the right to know law. I'm not sure and I don't want her to blurt it out publicly if it is in fact, non-public information. Does that make sense? So my suggestion is that we go into non-public. We hear from Ms. Prue and if it is not in fact, non-public, then we don't seal the minutes and we can share the information from public. Does that sound acceptable? Okay, so I'd be looking for a motion to go into non-public under RSA, uh, ninety-one, eight, three, two, C, negotiations. So moved. Okay, that was Ms. Bishop. I'll second it. Mr. Guarino, when you're ready. Nobody's waving at me like they want to talk about it, so let's just do it.
Okay, on the motion to go into non-public, uh, Mr. Guarino votes yes. Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Deem?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you.
Eight thirty-seven PM.
Motion to add that public comments onto, um, our continued session. Is that right, Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Oh.
I thought we did, the last motion was that we were going to hear of the three contracts and then end the meeting. So.
That was the last motion. Ms. Brown would like to, um, make a motion to add public comments to that as well. Does that make sense? But I believe, I, I don't care if you do it now or if you do it after. It's up to you. Okay, so, um, we're back in public. It is nine oh four PM. Um, if, um, I could please have a motion to seal the minutes?
So moved.
Okay, Ms. Deem seconds.
Yes.
Okay, on the motion to seal the minutes, uh, Mr. Guarino votes yes. Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Zee?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero. Uh, the sealed at nine oh five PM.
Okay, great. Uh, Ms. Brown?
Thank you, Ms. Raymond. Um, we got, just got informed that there were, um, a couple of folks waiting on the phone uh, for public comment. So I would like to move that we add, uh, public comment to the end of the meeting, please.
I'll second that.
Okay, so just for clarity, this is to add it to the two items that we have left. Correct? Okay.
I'm seconding that.
I'm sorry, Mr. Guarino, what?
Where was it? Is that Ms. Oden? Okay, yep.
Okay. So. Go ahead, call the roll, Mr. Guarino.
Yep, on the motion to add public comment, Mr. Guarino votes yes. Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Zee?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Great, so, um, moving right along, our prior motion had been to, um, discuss, um, the First Church contract, which we have done, um, to, um, um, move to approve the Adult Learning Center contracts. Um, and then to, um, discuss a personnel recommendations. Um, Ms. Oden, did you wish to make a motion regarding the Adult Learning Con- Contracts?
I move, oh, let me see, where's my sheet? I move to, uh, approve the contract with the adult, uh, contracts with the Adult Learning Center, Clearway, for the twenty, not, twenty, 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 twenty-one school year.
Second. Is there any discussion on Ms. Oden's motion? Okay, uh, yes, Ms. Deem?
I, um, I'm, I think I've missed something because I haven't heard any resolutions or any, uh, any more conversation about this since the last meeting that I was in where it was discussed. Do we need to go into non-public to discuss this?
I don't know. It was discussed, um, at the finance committee, um, and the contract was put forward to the full board. Um, so I guess the question is, would you like it non-public to answer your questions?
Well, at the minimum, I'd like an overview of what happened at finance. I, that's, the, the, when I got up to Maine, I was so far in the woods that, that sitting for a three or a four or a two-hour meeting was impossible. I would have had to go and sit in front of a school by myself through four, three, three, four, it would have been on, it just wasn't unten, it was unteniable. It was not doable. So unfortunately I missed that meeting, so I have no idea what the conversation was. And, and without having that, I would have to abstain because I, I don't know enough. I don't have any information on which to make an intelligent vote.
Okay, that's, oh, am I on mute? Uh, that's reasonable. Um, I will say that the contracts are included in your packet this mon, this week. Um, I know our packet was ninety-two pages, so I understand if people weren't, uh, able to recall every single thing in there. Um,
Can I just say it passed, it passed the Finance and Operations Committee unanimously?
Thank you. That's a good thing. I'll just abstain. I think that's fair. Since I'm the only one, I don't want to hold it up because obviously time is of the essence. So if it's all right with everybody else, I will abstain. Not because I, I, obviously they're, they're great. I don't have any. I love the Adult Learning Center and I love that school. Uh, uh, you all know that my niece was there and they provided a miracle for her life. So for that, I will always be in their debt. So I'll just abstain, but please know it doesn't mean that I don't appreciate their services because I certainly do.
Thank you, um, Ms. Deem. I think that, um, that was very lovely and heartfelt and I certainly would never want to ask anybody to vote on something when they didn't feel like they had a complete picture, that it's just not fair. Uh, Mr. Guarino?
Um, I was just going to, um, say that, uh, ask if, I don't think that, uh, we went into non-public to discuss the contracts, uh, in.